Hold on my computer. Okay, so let's call this meeting to order. Friday, August fourteenth. This is a work session. Specifically to speak with Kim Weber, who's the finance director for the city of Steamboat Springs. Let's first do a roll call for the record of who's on. This is Neil Minch.
Michael Howell.
Anna Andrews Mills.
And Nancy Fortune.
And Pat Sedsman.
Okay, great. So, Kim is in the middle of, well, in the early stages, I suppose, of 2021 budget work. So a huge thank you, Kim, for making the time. Really appreciate it. Perhaps I could just give you a little bit of background. And then perhaps you could, Kim, just briefly cover the materials that you sent us. But ultimately, last autumn, there was a community-led ballot initiative to add a 0.3% sales tax to the city's sales tax rate, specifically for funding arts, culture, and history in Manu Springs. These funds can be operational and capital. Okay? We, after a few months, now have a MAC board. And I am the chair of that. Nancy Fortune is our council liaison. Okay? And we're in the early stages of getting ourselves organized. And we got quite a fast timeline because we've got to have this pretty much ready by the end of the year. I had done a bit of research early this year, and I'd seen Steamboat Springs, Breckenridge, and a couple of other communities, just to see the kind of stuff they were doing. And Steamboat kind of stuck out a bit as they just seem to be perhaps more there for us to maybe leverage as we build and design a process. So the purpose of this meeting here is to help the participants. And I see Beth Davis has joined us. Beck is the finance director for Manu Springs. So I'm not sure if you two know each other, but now you do. The purpose here is, is just to help accelerate our ability to design a process and just maybe learn from some of your experiences. So I can go ahead and share. And this is what I want to share. There we go. So, Kim, do you want to just kind of run down? There we go. I'm having to kind of scroll this in a PDF. So you have to excuse the... There you go.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that introduction. I am Kim Weber. I'm the finance director for the city of Steamboat Springs. I've been with the city for about almost 21 years, worked in just about every facet of the finance department. And I've been the finance director for about 10 years. And seen the community support in all different ways. But we probably around 2009, this process was created. And it's been, it's been really beneficial from how we did it before. So I'll share some of that as well. But primarily, so ours is a little bit different because we don't have a dedicated funding source. Ironically, we're actually presenting to city council in September, giving them the history of all of the community support. And because there's a couple of council members that would like to look for a dedicated funding source. Right now, our financial policies say we will allocate a percentage, which, right, it's a 1.4% or 6% of our general fund to coalitions or to the community support coalition. So ours is a little bit different because we have these three coalitions, as you can see on your screen. We take a percentage of our general fund. It usually comes up to around a half million dollars. I think it was about $550,000 in 2020. And then we have a steering committee for community support coalitions. And we have environmental, human resources, and arts and culture. So you guys have focused on arts and culture. This, this is really all three categories, but it works. I think it could work well for you guys as well. So for us, it's not a dedicated funding source, like I said. So it really depends on the annual appropriation by the city council. But because it's a formula, city council is pretty supportive of it and rarely changes it. So in the budget process, like we're at right now, we establish the approximate dollar amount. And then I meet with these three coalition chairs. They each have a dedicated person that's the chair of the committees. And I kind, I probably would equate that to your board. And we meet and they divide up the funds between the three coalitions. So you guys won't have to do that part. But then they solicit applications from the community. They do all have to be nonprofits in order to qualify for the funds. And so they solicit applications through a few months in the summer. And then they also solicit committee, committee members. Maybe you guys wouldn't do that because maybe that would be your board's responsibility to review the applications. But then they review the applications and then they have, they have actual interviews with each one of the applicants. And those interviews are all open to the public. Not a lot of public attends, but they are open meetings. And so are when we meet as a steering committee, those are all open to the public. We once in a while have a, someone from the newspaper attend, but no one else has ever attended. But we do have to publicize those and, and take minutes and record them, et cetera, like you're doing now. And then they... So they, we have a scoring sheet, which I believe I shared with you. I have it on my screen that I can share as well. But we have a scoring sheet that, oh, yes. So this is the scoring sheet for environmental. If you scroll down a little bit, I think it's pretty much the same backup. Right there. This is something that each one of the committee members fills out as they're interviewing the applicants. And this is because it's really, it's general fund city money, just from our general sales tax. So the city council has set the, what the rating criteria should be. So I actually took this to city council and said, here's the rating criteria. Are you okay with this? They tweaked it a little bit. So we want that activity to reduce a city service. And then, of course, demonstrate positive arts and culture impact. Meaningful or evidence that meaningful collaboration for the city council. They really wanted to see things like that they're collaborating with other organizations, that they're doing their own fundraising, that they're not just relying on this revenue source to run their organization. So hence the next one, the grant is no more than 30% of the organization's total budget. That was, that's really important for council that they don't just, the organizations aren't just relying on this revenue source. And then they want the organization to have good health. And so this is just a guiding factor. And then, so each one of the committee members fills this out. And then at the end, they collaborate together. The committee collaborates together and they either fill out just one sheet and provide it back to me. Or they provide each one of the score sheets back to me. Each organization does it a little bit differently. And then they allocate the funds based on what was requested, based on the scoring. And then that is presented to city council as a, here is what we recommend, here's what was asked, here's what we recommend. And city council typically has some, a few questions. Why didn't this one rank higher? And there's justification. And then they approve that recommendation by resolution. And for us, then, we have our payments set up to where if they receive over $10,000, we split it into two payments. We pay the first half in January and the second half in July. And then if they receive under $10,000, they receive the full amount in January. This year was really key for that for us because of the budget issues. So we released the first half of community support payments in January. But with COVID, we really looked hard at potentially reducing some of those through our budget cuts. In the end, council decided not to. But if you're relying on sales tax and depending on how, if you're doing it in arrears, if you're granting it in arrears. So if you started collecting this tax in, say, in January of 2020, which I'm not sure when you started. Is that what you did?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'm assuming then at the end of the year, you'll know the amount of money that you're going to spend for the following year. Okay.
Exactly.
And into multiple payments would not be near as important. If you were spending it in the year that you collected, that would be important.
Yep, yep, yep.
I went through a lot of information. The one other thing that I wanted to hit is we do, this, this one right here. We do require each one of the committee members, which maybe you had to do as being part of the board, to just fill out this conflict of interest statement. And just because they're part of an arts and culture or historical organization doesn't mean they can't participate. It just, they need to call out what that conflict is and disclose it. In, for our arts and culture coalition, we have the executive, the chair of the coalition committee is actually the executive director of one of our larger arts. It's called Steamboat Creates. And she has to step down from any discussions that have to do with anything with Steamboat Creates. We have had some community issues with people seeing a conflict of interest there. But it's really hard to find someone that wants to dedicate that much time to a process that doesn't have some sort of appearance of a conflict of interest. So we allow them to still, if you donate to an organization, if you, you know, are involved in an organization, you can still be a part of the process. You just need to disclose it.
Okay. Kim, on the eligibility, you mentioned a 501(c)(3). Is that demonstrated with a certificate of good standing?
So they don't actually have to be a 501(c)(3). They have to be some sort of nonprofit.
Okay, okay.
Barely have to be a 501(c)(3). And I do believe they researched that based, they do require some sort of documentation, whether it's a certificate from the IRS. They do require something as part of the application.
Is there an age limitation? If they were formed yesterday, could they apply today? Or is there a... Okay, okay.
There's not, for, for ours, there's not a longevity requirement. There's also, I've talked to other people that will only use the, have the money available for kind of seed money. And there's an expiration of how many times they can apply for that. We don't have that. We have organizations that have been a part of the process for decades.
Yeah. What actually triggered starting this back in 2009? Was it a city council led or was it community-led or?
It was more, so the city council has always funded these coalitions in one, one way or another. But what happened is it used to be that there was a certain amount of money allocated. And then we do an all-day-long budget process in October. And we would spend a few hours on $40 million. And then it would come to community support and they would spend four hours allocating the community support because each organization would come in front of council and say, we need $10,000 because we have this great idea. And we're gonna do, and so it started as a committee that then allocated all of the funds. And then came back to council and presented that. Then we have a human resource coalition that's been in existence for a lot longer. And it was working really well. They were coming to us with one request, but a list of all of their, who they were going to grant the funds to. And so we just mimicked that. And then, and it was, it was a primarily driven by our finance director at the time that really organized the process itself. And we mimicked what the human resource coalition was already doing because they were getting funds from the county, they were getting funds from other way, other places, part of United Way. And so they had a process set up and we just mimic that for the environmental coalition and the arts and culture coalition.
Okay. I've got some additional questions, but I'm going to let others ask because I'm doing a lot of talking as well.
I have a question. What is the application that they submit look like?
So originally, it was supposed to be the Colorado granting form, and that worked pretty well. I did go on the coalition chairs websites to see if they were advertising. And they have tweaked it a bit for what they need. We aren't as concerned about the application, but they've tweaked it a bit. But if you, if you're starting from scratch, I would say you could use the Colorado granting form. And I think there's a better title for that.
I think it's a common grant, yeah. So I'll ask too, then, the chair selects the members. Are they formally appointed by council or is it strictly done by the coalitions themselves to choose and appoint their members?
That's a, that's a great question. So we previously had the council approve the members. And they, we would provide them the conflict of interest forms and they would officially vote and approve them. We've taken that out of, it, it created a lot of additional time and they never, the first seven or eight years, they never had any issues with any of the members. But it might be as you're just starting out, as you're building trust, it might be good for the council to at least approve the conflict of interest forms. But we don't do that anymore. But that was at one time, part of the, part of the process.
And what was the rationale for splitting out the the three areas, the environmental, the human resources, and the arts and culture, as opposed to just having one panel do them all?
It was, it was, it's a lot of work as it is, and human resources was already created. And we wanted to have people who were applying needed to fit in one of these categories. They just, someone that didn't fit in one of these categories couldn't apply. So it was to narrow down the focus and have specific focuses on arts and culture, specific on human resources, and specific on environmental.
And, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, we do have other community support requests from the city side. And those then go directly to either the department that they support. So for like our search and rescue, it would go to the public safety department. For, we have trails, bike trails, nonprofits. And they actually just go to the Parks and Rec Department directly and, and offer to contract or request community support. And it really narrowed down the focus of all of the different requests that we were getting.
You just answered my second question, which was if you get other requests that don't go to these. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Stop talking now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Michael Howell here. Kim, you talked about $550,000. That is the total for all three of these categories.
That's correct. And I, I could share my screen and show you what all organizations got funded and the amounts, if that's helpful.
I think it would be actually. Because I'm sure it may mimic actually what ends up happening in Manu, given our structure.
So here is, and you might have to move the, your people around a little. But here's what actually we require or comes back to city council. And it shows, so here's arts and culture. So here are all the organizations that were funded. And this was the 2017 amount, 2018, 2019. And then they show us what the requests were, which the requests are always more than what gets funded. So for the arts and culture coalition, $209,000 was requested and they funded $158,000. So you can see like Friends of the Chief requested $35,000. They ended up funding them at $25,000.
Okay. Yeah, what jumps out at me is year to year, it's relatively stable even at the organization level.
Yeah, the only time it really jumps up or down is usually if there's a capital project.
Yeah.
But then they always have to think about if there's a capital project happening, then they still, the, the amount of money doesn't go up or down unless the sales tax does. So they, then it comes from other organizations. And some of that comes during the discussion with us. We allocate to the three different coalitions. So those coalition chairs come to the table and say, hey, I have three new applicants. Someone else says, oh, well, we don't have the Center for Visual Arts, so we actually are one applicant down. And they work really well together to say, okay, well, you can have more money this year. And, but you guys won't have that because it all goes, unless you had two separate coalitions, but it doesn't...
Yeah, we actually have, let's call it two buckets.
Okay.
One is for kind of smaller nonprofits. And which is 34% of the total. And 66% is for five specific uses, entities, which can be capital or operational, but I expect a lot will end up being capital kind of projects. But, but there are two distinct buckets.
That makes sense.
Michael, did you have anything else?
No, I'll wait. Go ahead.
Oh, no, 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 I'm good. You go if you have one.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. I did have, I think you actually answered my next set of questions with this, with this level of detail. Because I was going to ask what the typical award amount was and that kind of stuff.
And I can send this to you for your records too. I didn't include it in the first email.
Yeah, I think, you know, what will be our challenge, of course, is the request versus the funding. That ultimately is going to be the key here. Okay, anyone else have questions? Because if that's it, I think, oh, um, Kim, did you want to talk about that thing that you sent me earlier?
Sure. It just, as I was thinking about this and I read a little bit about your tax, I thought it actually lines up somewhat with our education tax. So another way, and this is, this is, might make your eyes gloss over a little. But we have a 0.5% sales tax that's dedicated to, for educational purposes. It's outside of our school funding that gets property tax. It was originally passed by the voters to add technology for our students, add additional teachers. And it's kind of morphed over the years, but it's a 0.5% sales tax that's collected by the city, because it's a city sales tax, that then we pass through directly to a 501(c)(3) board that's been created called the Education Fund Board. So they created an education fund board that has their own accounting, everything. And we just, we collect the school tax, we pass it right through the following two weeks. We keep, the city keeps an administrative fee of 1% of that. And we have an agreement between the city and the education fund board that the city keeps 1%. We just pass the rest of the money through. They do all their own accounting. They do all their own. We don't ever look at the grant applications. We don't ever look at any final reports or anything. They are responsible to manage that and they write the checks. So the difference between that scenario and the community support scenario is the city actually collects all the information, writes the checks, collects the final report that I also shared that we require from the granting agency. And then we authorize payment to the nonprofit. The school tax, they actually collect and distribute all of the funds. They determine how much they want to keep in fund balance. At the end of the year, they determine how much they're going to grant. And they just report to city council. And we have an agreement between the two organizations to handle that. So it's you would, you would, this board would have to create a 501(c)(3) and become a nonprofit organization that would then handle all of those funds and grant them and redistribute them. So it's a little different.
Yeah, I think, I think it's fair to say that, and Nancy or Becky, you can comment, that we'll be going the you know, committee route. That's, that's how we've been set up. And this is a small town, 5,000 population. Everyone knows everyone.
Right.
Which has its good things, it has bad things. But, but I thought it was good just to let folks know that you have a similar process, but a slightly different purpose, I suppose.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say that we have, the city has two organizations that we treat in the manner that you were just talking about. And that's the Chamber of Commerce. We just give them the money and then they do what they want. And that's the Chamber of Commerce. We just give them the money and then they do what they want with it. And the URA, which is a special district. And those were both set up that way. But in this case, this board is a group of volunteers. And I don't think they want to get into that whole aspect of forming a true, true organization with their own separate accounting and all that. I think they prefer to be a volunteer board that advises the city. And that's how it's been set up this time.
Yeah.
That sounds good. I just wanted to make sure and put that out there.
I did have a couple more questions generated by the discussion. And one is, what's the population of Steamboat?
12,000 and change.
Okay. And your primary income is via tourism, correct?
About 60%, or about 50%, yes. It's tourism.
And what's your general fund total?
About 45 to 50 million.
Okay. So bigger than us. And you've talked, I mean, you've done, you guys have done a great job. It sounds really like this, this is going incredibly well for you. Does, does council typically approve what is presented to them by this, by these coalitions?
Yeah, 95% of the time. It will be probably a little more challenging in a small, smaller community because you're going to have people that, you're going to have your board say, you know, this is our recommendation. And then you're going to have the community members go into council members saying, well, we wanted 6,000 and we only got 5,000. And so it's building that, that trust. But then also giving council, I guess, that option to change it. But I think the more tools you can have upfront, the more scoring cards, the more justification. Even if you added scoring categories and just try to make it as objective as possible, it's very subjective. But having that and having the council approve the scorecard to start with, we've seen that in some of our other areas, like our capital projects. We ask council to approve all of how we're going to rank our capital projects beforehand. And then we rank them. And of course it's subjective, but we say, well, yeah, because the, the way you wanted us to rank them, this is how it came. But I guess allowing them to make those adjustments. But we've only had a couple and one was ours, we have a summer, a free summer concert series. And they were disappointed that the committee didn't fund them at the full amount. So what they did is they pulled them out of the coalition itself and made it a line item budget in their city council budget. And they said, we're going to always fund them at this amount. And we said, okay.
Okay. And lastly, it sounds like it's a great process that you guys have put in place. And it's, it's, you've given us some really good stuff to assess here. I would ask, is there anything that hasn't worked well or that you would have done differently if you could do it over?
What hasn't worked well is just the personalities. And so there's really not a lot you can do. The other, well, there is one thing. Last year, or no, 2018, I think, we were taking the scorecard back to city council for them to approve it. And the, I was on the council agenda to take it in and approve it. And the arts coalition kind of went around me and submitted their own document. And it really created bumps in the process. Having a united front between the staff and the, the board, or ours is committee, is really important. And because it put, otherwise you, you set yourself, both staff and the committee, up for failure. Because if you put it in the council's hands to make the decisions, it's very political. If you can keep it more at the staff and committee level as much as possible, that I would recommend. And so I have a really good relationship with our committee members. And I try to help them as much as possible. And we try to go to council with a united front. And we try to do all of the details in the background and provide council with a full package. That's been really helpful. And I'm not saying we haven't had bumps in the road and we don't still. Because we, when we were talking about not funding the second half of payments, there were Facebook posts all over and, you know, petitions and stuff going around. But just keeping that direct line of communication between staff and the board.
And that's, yeah, great. Thank you.
One more question. Do, are these funds distributed in arrears like you were saying before? Because that's the plan here, to take like the 2020, we'll go into 2021. And that way there's a set amount. We don't have to work, worry about environmental factors affecting the amount of money to distribute, such as a pandemic.
I highly recommend that. For us, we don't have a dedicated funding source. So it's just a line item in our budget. So really, it's, you could view it either way. But I, I do work with the local marketing district and I work with the URA. And all of those are funded in arrears. And I absolutely recommend that. Because if you like this year where we, we granted all the money, we approved it, and then we talked about potentially pulling some of that back, it was very hard for the small nonprofits to plan for. So.
Yep.
It will be hard because they'll be sitting, they'll be able to look at the balance in the fund and say, you know, there's X amount of dollars sitting there. We could be using that. But I think it is best, especially where you're at in the process. You're set up perfectly for that, that you can say, all right, starting 2021, we'll allocate the funds that we collected in 2020.
Yeah, absolutely. Guys, I think we need to let, you know, Kim go back to her budget. Any last kind of questions? Kim, I anticipate that we may want to consult with you again as we get into having some definition. And I can just contact you ad hoc if that's okay with you.
Absolutely, yep. Feel free to reach out to me.
Awesome. Thank you so much for your time. The rest of you, thank you all for joining. This has been helpful and I think will accelerate our progression. So I'm going to press, I guess I have to adjourn the meeting officially. So I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 8:38 AM. All of you have a great day and a great weekend. And for the board, we'll see you next Thursday. Hopefully it will work this time. All right.
Great. Good luck.
Cheers.
Kim, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.